Hello, everybody. We'll start this meeting now. I will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBoer here. Tretschel?
Here.
Pfeiffer?
Here.
Walsh-Lager?
Here.
Connor?
Here.
Holquist?
Here.
President Fannerstall?
Here. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance, this will be led by trustee Pfeiffer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just gonna, we'll do public comments. Anybody that would like to speak in public comment, please feel free to step forward and don't want everybody to go at once, but you can line up at the podium if you'd like to. Alright, no one on the end? Anybody want to speak in public comments?
I didn't want to trip over, I was gonna say we're all coming, to share. It feels somehow familiar. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board tonight. I'm Kim Schubert. I'm president of the Arrowhead School Board. And I come as, you have an agenda item this evening that's high on our list. I just want to qualify that any comments I make this evening are my own. As a singular board member, I do not represent my board. However, I might suggest that you might find other board members who share similar opinions. So, knowing that this was on the agenda tonight, President Fannerstall and I had spoken and I thought I would come and just kind of give you a background on where this is at with our board right now and what kind of transpired to bring it to you. And to share, I think, some personal perspective on my opinions around why there is some value in considering annexation of our district by the village board. So, with regards to some background, it kind of arose out of, obviously, we had two failed Capitol referendums last November and then the following April. Our board started meeting in kind of a series of facility workshops. What do we do from here? What are next steps? At that same time, President Fannerstall and I also had kind of engaged in some conversations that I thought, you know, it's relative to our board's choices moving forward. And so, to one of the facility workshops, Ryan came in and delivered a presentation. And we had, I think, some real robust discussion. Again, a second meeting with both Ryan and President Fannerstall, where our board talked about a number of things. One of those things was just the history of capturing our high school within Heartland in the past and how many years back that goes. And I think just a good history of what the relationships between the village board had looked like and potentially the past boards at Arrowhead High School. And the need for improvement around that. So, our board's different than the board that had been there in the past. And we'd like to see a much more collaborative, partnering type of relationship with the village of Heartland. We also talked about annexation, pros, cons. And following those discussions, our board engaged further, more robust discussion, and actually took it to our council for their perspective, points to consider, timeframe, process. And so, we were further informed by that. Following that, my board signaled to me, you know, it'd be really nice to know how the village board feels about annexation. What is your interest? And, you know, what would you like to see happen? So, that kind of leads us to tonight, and that's why I'm here this evening. So, that's kind of the background. So, from my perspective, while there are many, many reasons that public schools engage in the prospects of annexation by, with municipalities, when you look at our particular circumstances, I think there are three top reasons that kind of arise as perhaps the most valuable things to consider. The first one, I think, is really around community identity and school identity. When you have a school that has surrounding it a contiguous boundary, there is some level of ownership and a shared identity that I think can be impacted one to the other. And you can see that. I was very, very pleased to be a part of the homecoming parade, for instance. And any of you that have attended that one particular event, to just see this partnership that happens with the community, our school, and with your village, with the businesses that allow that, I think it's a win-win for everyone. And so, that type of experience informs me that potentially there are a lot more things that we could consider. I think a second reason for considering it is enhanced student and family services. I think when we better understand your youth development programs and the needs of your recreational programming and how that syncs with the high school, the better off we are. I'm very proud to tell you, as you probably have heard, that we brought the state championship trophy home from Camp Randall last Friday. Just a phenomenal job, first time in 12 years for our football team. Exceptionally proud of our kids, our coaches, school pride. But it's not just our football team. We have celebrated huge success in girls and boys cross-country, girls tennis, boys volleyball, girls field hockey, girls golfing, girls swim. All this past fall, advanced a lot of those teams forward to state and just enjoy huge success with the programming. So, we full well do understand that the success that we enjoy at our high school stems from the recreational and youth development that happens here in the municipalities. And so, to be able to kind of keep affording our pipeline of kids, that to sync up, I think, is a really, really good thing. And I think it also opens the doors, potentially, for some considerations for adult resident programming that we've never really done a lot with in the past either. A third thing is in the area of support for both school and community facilities. Kind of hot off the press, Lynn Blige, who's another board member, can share with you. We recently had a board meeting where we were discussing the need for a change to Arrowhead Drive. Clearly, there is so much congestion and frustration there and safety concerns. Again, great difficulty when you have that section that goes off into, I think it's Irene and Evelyn that are both courts. That area becomes kind of Merton, kind of Heartland. And again, this lack of contiguous boundary makes things very difficult. Who do we work with then for the municipality? So, I think clarity would come out of a relationship, a better relationship with Heartland. And then, secondarily, you know, Jeff and I had talked about, you know, the prospects of an auditorium that would service the Heartland area. Well, at some point, to have parallel discussions that might include Heartland as well as our school, and heaven knows, it is a non-stop discussion at our school, our pool, as we've reached, I think, the ripe old age of about 55 years at this point. And it's a challenge just keeping water in that pool. But there should not be duplicity like that. And so, it's duplicity of, by design, and duplicity of expense. And so, at some point, to be able to collaborate on some of these different recreational things that perhaps we donate site and collaborate on construction, that type of conversation, I think, would be a worthwhile one. So, I just, I know I'm going kind of long, but I just thought I'd share, just for the board to understand fully who Arrowhead is, because we are clearly much, much more than our sports and what the value of our partnership really would be. We have recently gotten the, I think it was three weeks ago, the DPI State Report Card and are extremely proud of our recent successes. I think after far too many years of not living up to potential at our school, seeing academic decline, we have actually turned a corner. And for the first time in over 10 years, we have received both the top 10, I think we're one of the top 10 state in the state that is recognized by both US News and World Report and NISH. And we received the highest rating that's available on the DPI Report Card, significantly exceeds expectations. We hadn't been there in a while. Our numbers in terms of academic performance are where we were five years ago, which is an excellent trajectory for us. So, for two years in a row, we're building back up again to where our potential is. And so, we're a great quality school. All of these things have happened with a tremendous amount of focus on programming, a great deal of change, and just a tremendous amount of hard work by certainly the administrative team, the faculty, the board, and the parents who've been involved. So, we're very, very proud of our school. And hopefully, you see that as a potential partner for Village of Heartland. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
So, the, we were still, no one wants to speak in public comment, right? So, what I will ask, if the board will allow, and it was at least requested, they'll at least put it in front of the board if we want to pull their item up to discuss. So, what's been sent to the board is a letter of intent from Arrowhead. It's totally up to the board, I'm just saying. And since Kim just spoke, it's up to you guys, but if someone did want to suspend the rules, then we could pull that item up, discuss it, and then while they're here.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The rules are suspended. It would take a motion to move the item.
I will make a motion to move item 10 to item 1.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to move item 10 to item 1. And I'm gonna take that and take the item up right away. But all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. So, we'll take that item up and then go right through our agenda. So, then the item that we would have in front of us is discussion of Arrowhead Union High School Board Letter of Intent regarding possible Arrowhead High School annexation. As Kim had just alluded to, there had been some discussion and there was a chicken or the egg kind of discussion on what exactly had to happen. Their board basically talked about this, discussed it, to my understanding, kind of to the point of where they think they probably want to move forward with it, but wanted to find out what this board might think of it. So, they sent a letter of intent saying we have the intent to go forward with it, but they don't want to take all the steps that'd be necessary to put this all together to come and have us not want to have them in the village. So, that was the letter of intent that came forward. So, basically, what we can do, since they're here, they'll hear our, what our pros and cons are, but kind of like they did, we have to talk about our pros and cons. I can give a few and I'll let the chiefs chime in if they, if they want to just jump in, kind of just tell me, hey, I want to talk too. But we already cover them for FIRE. They fall under the Western Lakes blanket. I think it's the Western Lakes, Western Lakes blanket, which we have a contract, we're contracted to cover that. So, we already cover that. The police department does not have jurisdiction at the high school. The school has SROs through Waukesha County Sheriff. But Chief has, I'll let Chief touch on what he's done with that in discussing with them.
So, yeah, jurisdiction gets a little foggy up there. As the president from the Arrowhead School Board already mentioned, Arrowhead or Heartland kind of surrounds Arrowhead in a lot of different ways, but it doesn't in others. So, where it's always in and out of our jurisdiction. It's in the town of Merton, so it is covered by Waukesha County Sheriff's deputies for school resource officer coverage. But then, the town of Merton no longer contracts with the Waukesha County Sheriff's Office for police services. They contract with what is now Lachla Bell. So, I think second shift it is. Lachla Bell covers the town of Merton. So, it gets very confusing who's doing what when, kind of up there at the moment with some of that. We did have a conversation with Jeff Gross, who is their business services director. He just was curious on costs for the school if we were to provide school resource officers. If this were to be something that was annexed into Heartland, my request and recommendation to the village board would be we would absolutely cover it with our school resource officer, because we're gonna get called up there anyway as being the primary jurisdiction. So, we would want that school resource officer position to be a Heartland Police Department position. So, they currently are served by two SROs. Mr. Gross and I met and we kind of talked through what that would look for Heartland. Right now, I believe Waukesha County subsidizes a little bit of the second shift officer position. And I told them I didn't have authority to do anything like that, but I could paint like worst cost picture kind of thing. Like, hey, here would be 100% reimbursement for everything. So, that would include both the day shift, second shift SRO. That would include any equipment or startup costs, vehicle costs, and we were able to provide those to him. And again, if there were to be split on any of that coverage, I told him that would be something that we'd have to come to the village board for that approval. I don't have the authority to give something like that. So, I was just trying to paint worst kind of cost scenario for them to show them what that would look like. So, those discussions were all had. I know he looked at it positively, especially if they could meet. I believe the second shift SRO was covered 80% of the time or something in that ballpark by the school and then 20% by Waukesha County. If that, that's something where that position does not work there over the summer, like the day shift officer is assigned there for the entire year, the second shift is just assigned during the school year. But again, that would have to come from the village board to approve something like that. But I know he said if that were to happen, the numbers were very comparable.
Is there, is there only one SRO on staff during the first shift, for instance, for both campuses? There's just one officer?
Correct. One SRO is assigned during the day, and that's again, all year long. And it covers some of their summer school and other athletics during the summer. And then, there's a second shift SRO that comes in. And then, they cover all the activities during the school year that happen outside the school hours. And there's a little bit of overlap there.
With the subsidizing, I'm not for or against it, but this officer is at the school their entire shift.
Correct. So...
And then, in the summer, they're going to training and that's when they're using their vacation. So, they're not, that 20%, I don't know that you're really seeing it when they're using four weeks of vacation and going to a one or two week training for those.
Yeah. So, we obviously have union contracts, just like the sheriff's department has. So, I can't restrict people from taking off. But part of the position would be you would be there during the school year or else we would find a different assignment for you if you couldn't be there. But that would mean they would take off when it's not the school year. So, we have to have vacation time and holiday time for our staff, just like schools have that for their staff. And then, there's a school resource officer convention conference every year that the state puts on through NASRO. And we would obviously have an expectation to attend those. We want our people properly trained to be school resource officers, not just police officers. So, those would all be things we would engage with. With summer school too, that day shift one, I think 100% of their time would be either using their benefit time or being in the schools. The second shift officer may find some time, but it would be fairly limited. And it would be during those summer hours for the most part. Would we utilize that? Absolutely. I mean, we, that summertime is our busier time. People are out and about. It's daylight longer, things are happening longer, the weather's nicer. So, we could absolutely use the position. But it wouldn't be something that I'd probably come to you and say, I need 25% of an officer or something like that. But it would not go to waste. They would not be tooling their thumbs, doing nothing. We have the work for them whenever they wouldn't be assigned to the school.
Yeah. And that's the big thing. I just want you to understand, that officer lives at the school. They will be at the school. That is their job. They will not be out roaming the streets. They're at the school from 6:00 AM first shift till close. And then, the second shift is there from all the second shift.
Yeah. It'd be a little modified, probably, to meet the school day hours, but to that effect, yes. Yeah, it'd be a little modified probably to meet the school day hours, but to that effect, yes.
Just so everybody understands that that isn't another officer for patrolling or anything like that. That is 100% school use and it will, would be an assigned position. So we wouldn't have floaters. You would have, yeah, one person for shift one, one person for shift two.
Now, would there be any cost incurred to the village for any of those officers?
That would be stuff that we have, and what Chief is going off right now is what's kind of set up with Waukesha County and what they talked about, but that would be decided on us.
A vehicle, tasers, guns. I mean, you're probably 150, 160,000 for, for the first at least.
That with salaries you're talking? Yeah. More than that probably, if you're doing two, right? And then the equipment, yeah. But again, that's all something the board, we could get into the details on, but those are all conversations that did take place kind of in light of this to see if this was something we could get off the ground and it made sense or not. And I think that was one hurdle that we were able to overcome, would be the police service side of it.
I was going to say in talking with Chief and just jumping in here, like one thing I talked, like the first one is kind of off the table only because they said, yep, we can do that, including vehicle, everything. Another thing I talked to Chief about is I'm like, it's not going to have that many miles if it's at the school. We only need a new one every eight years now. Chief agreed, you know, it wouldn't necessarily have to be on the same cycle. So more so it would be talking about the second one, but those would be discussions on the school and how they want.
Yeah, if my memory serves me right, I think I quoted them for a 12-year, or 10-year vehicle. And that could possibly even last longer than that because the mileage won't get high, but that's something when you get into that 10-year mark, you don't want to budget more than that because lot rotten, vehicle age and conditions in this area can also weather that car, even though the miles isn't high and you want a reliable vehicle, obviously, for law enforcement. But again, that's a very low cost. You're spreading out a cost of a car over 10 years. It's not, we're not talking big dollar amounts.
And for other resources, just to throw in, so they're already on our water and they're already on our sewer. They do have some roads by them that are Merton roads or county roads. I'm just trying to throw out the things that people may think of, but obviously ask any questions you have. Again, I want everybody to remember this is just coming from the letter of intent. You know, I have some things that I want to add on why I, you know, initially continued on the conversations. I think it's a good idea. Historically, I mean, I think it's a good idea and you guys have heard me tell the story before. But also from a rec perspective and even I understand we're building a building, so we're going to have space for those elections, but it opens up the door for us being able to partner and have, you know, collaborate. Could we collaborate now? Yes. Would it get a little wild having rec over there when Heartland PD isn't the ones that have jurisdiction? I think it could really open up the door with collaboration that does happen. Summer program, having a place to go if all of a sudden there's inclement weather. Not only that, there's there's land there where they would be able to work with the school. These are all possibilities. Possibly work with a school where its summer camp is at this place because it's, looks like it might be inclement weather in the afternoon and we may have to go into a gym space or the cafeteria space. So these were all things that we were thinking of. From a community standpoint, I think, you know, when, when Arrowhead wins a state championship, just like Lake Country Lutheran, Lake Country Lutheran's in Heartland, they come and say, hey, can we get an escort to go? You know, pretty cool for the kids, that kind of thing. When Arrowhead gets it, even though it's not in Heartland, they still come forward and they say, hey, can you escort it? Because there is that tie to it, including people that are in sports where they're not even in the United States. If they're, you know, whether it be wrestling or other things that are in other countries. Countries, you know, they call it Heartland Arrowhead. There's the association because we are the municipality that the school is associated with because the school came from Heartland High School, which was a long time ago, and then they built it where they built it and, you know, regardless of what, how that got there. But from a community standpoint, I think it's very good for the region. I personally think it's very good for the village because of the partnering that can happen. Bringing in a library, I know we only set their budget, but even opening that door where because they're connected to so many communities that are outside of Heartland proper. When people go and take books out from the library, you know, by, by bringing the school in more and having more people come from what's considered towns, Heartland's getting more, the Heartland Library is getting more money on that. Because for each book taken out by someone that's not in the Heartland, the village of Heartland, you know, we're capturing that money. So it's a judgment call on the board. I think it's a good idea for the long run, but I mean, I want people to say their piece on whatever, you know, but that's, I think it's, the SRO thing, I'm not too worried about only after talking to Chief. I mean, even if we hold strong and say, hey, it's going to be 100% per. You know, that's originally how Chief went to them and said it. So it's something that can be discussed. And that'll kind of end up on what they want to pay for also. Anytime there is a lockdown at that school, I only know because, I mean, I went once when my kids went into lockdown and I know who I saw walking around. I mean, they're the first in, we're the closest, we're a mile away. I mean, yes, they have the SROs now, but if something hits the fan up there, obviously we'll have jurisdiction. So it's not that much of a difference. But now all of a sudden Chief is able to go and maybe there's a good idea anyways, but he's able to walk through that school. So our officers know that school. So if we're in a situation like that, you know, they know this building. So I'll let you guys talk. But I think it's a good idea for the community and in the long run for collaboration, even with rec voting, things of that nature. I think it's a good idea. There's other things I thought of, but I don't want to drag it on and on and on.
I do think it's a good, good thing for our community to consider annexing Arrowhead in. I think that there's so many different things that we aren't even thinking of right now that perhaps between what can benefit, maybe, I'm just throwing this out there, maybe there could be even a community sports complex, something that could be utilized for a pool and an indoor field that could be used by the community. As a, as a longtime coach, my mind tends to go there. But just, I think there's a lot of things that our community and our schools can benefit by coming together. So I'd be in support of it.
I just don't know what, I'm not opposed to it at this point, but I was just curious as like the financials, what would the financials be on our, the village?
I'm going to leave that up to Ryan. I mean, we've really hammered this one. I'm going to, because I've, I've looked for like, where, now like, like the SROs, we're in full control of that. We get to vote and we can even say, nope, 100%, we got to have that money back. But like going, like what are we missing? What costs are there in there? Taxes don't change because right now we don't get taxes in the land and the school doesn't pay taxes. So that doesn't change. But I'm going to let Ryan talk. I've looked and looked and looked and.
Yeah, there's no jurisdictional flip with the, with the land, the water and sewer is connected to us. Just a couple of things that will, if they do, if we do file the annexation, it would create an island up, up on the hill. The DOR may not allow it for that purpose. Those people don't want to come into the village, obviously, for a higher tax rate. But that would just be, it should happen because it's already almost an island to begin with. Other financial aspects, I just want to see how the town of Merton and Western Lake Fire react because they are currently, we, in the contract that they pass for. And that would now become part of Heartland. So we would lose that from the contract of the fire. So I don't know if that would decrease it or what it would do. Other than that, I mean, we're meeting, we're meeting with Attorney DeLamore tomorrow to discuss that. We'll bounce some things. He had, he put an email together with some of his thoughts, but a lot of it was based on water, sewer, things that they already have through the village. And I don't know how it would look for snow plowing on that little stretch, you know, if that becomes Heartland Road or not Heartland Road. I assume it would stay Merton driving up to the residential houses. So we're not plowing Arrowhead. We're not doing anything like that. So. Trust me, I've been doing the same thing as Jeff, trying to think of what, what are we missing? So.
In addition to what your comments are, she mentioned the change of Arrowhead Drive. She mentioned that she was, they would provide the area for an auditorium and then also if there was a sewer or plumbing issue, a sewer issue, because I heard their infrastructure is terrible. Is that expenses coming to us if, once this is annexed then?
No, it's, that's all private. It's theirs, under their road. That would be something we would still ensure that it stays private because it is under their driveway, under areas that are harder to maintain. I think the, the Arrowhead Drive, if you, you've been here a long time, the original goal was to have campus drive somehow connect up with the campus. I think they have a desire to do that. Don't know, I mean, we're doing campus drive in 2027. So beyond that, if we pave from campus up to them, who, who does what? That's for you guys to decide. Whether they do it, we do it, however we do it. And then what was the other item?
Well, that was just a, she mentioned the auditorium.
Yeah. So I think the thought behind that is if we ever built a gym auditorium sports complex and it wasn't 100% donor funded, we have the capability to do that without a referendum like we're looking at doing for municipal building, but we could be a partner down the road. This isn't a today, tomorrow. But there is that opportunity that it is a shared space, shared whatever, however it looks. If the board and their board ever decides to do something like that. So.
And I do want to just add like, like the water and stuff, there's certain things that we have to provide, but we're already providing up, up to their connection point. Any of the other items would be only allowable if the board said, yes, let's do this, whatever that may be, on any of the items you had brought up.
Yep.
And I think one of the big things we talked about too is the partnerships. We don't have a ton of partnerships in the rec program. We don't have a lot of facilities. Jeff and I went to their meeting. They have baseball fields that are generally open. There's facilities that might be able to have some kind of shared, shared use for summer months. And, you know, I hadn't thought about the summer camp, but that's not a terrible idea. There's a lot of soccer fields. I know Arrowhead always has things going on, but see what we could or couldn't work out down the road recreationally.
I have a few running off of what Tim said. Are there still storm sewer pipes running under South Campus? Okay, well, that was one of the concerns that.
Would you be able to come up to the microphone?
That's all right. Forget that question. I just, that would be a concern because I know when a lot of that was being put in from people actually who were there when some of this was done, it's not done to the village specs. And I know that like, we certainly don't want to take over the utilities at all. I understand the water and all that, we still provide. But I don't want to turn into an expensive venture, like if we had to replace the water main or.
You got to remember like Heartland North, Heartland South, they have all of their own water, sewer, storm, everything. We don't touch it.
There's a lot, even the roads, when they were put in, you know, they're not what we would put in.
And that's, that's my, that's a question I wonder about when you turn into Arrowhead, that is Merton's road, that whole stretch all the way up. I think it would stay that way.
And also it was my understanding when we went through this several years ago with the annexation and we voted it down then. I remember there, at that point, there was, they couldn't even come up with the plans for what was where, for the roads and utilities. And that was a real issue, I know, with some of our people. And I don't know if any of that's been changed.
Well, irregardless though, that, that water and sewer, if they don't know where it goes, it's still going into our water and sewer.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I don't want any of those expenses to come onto, to the village.
Chief may know.
Taxes.
When he was in public works.
I don't want a bigger expense coming into the village for our taxpayers either. I don't see a big, other than sports, I don't see a real benefit to the village. I mean, I think that definitely, you know, have a better, you know, relationship and work together on things and we could still have shared programs and such without the annexation. I don't see why we would do the annexation and have the possible cost that could potentially come in.
Can you, can you quantify the cost? Because just using the word cost sounds, so can you lay out exactly which cost you're talking about?
Well, I'm talking about.
Not hypothetical, but the actual cost.
I don't have what it, what it costs because we don't know what's there. They don't know what's there. So I wouldn't know what it would cost.
We're already hooked up to them and we don't have a quantifiable cost because it doesn't exist. We've been digging and trying to find the cost.
We have to dig up the roads, if the water, you know, what happens if they want us to take over the utilities?
They have a main break. That's, they have to fix it.
They have to fix that.
They have to pay for it. They fix the pipes. What, we had that a couple of years ago. We were up there for a break. Fire just had to turn, try and turn everything off, control the flooding, but any, any repairs.
You two, no matter what, definitely want this. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm giving you the fact that you don't have to.
Good idea, but I'm, I just want to make, like, there's, there is cons.
I did not have time to talk to the people that have these answers. I just, I have talked to a few people that knew some of the history. And I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking anything that could all of a sudden be a big mountain or, you know, go from a little problem to a big expense.
And I agree with that 100%.
Because if we're going, if we're going to be doing these new buildings with our taxpayers, we don't need to put anything else out there right now. I just, I, I just want to make sure that it's not going to be a.
Yeah, I was trying to give you, I was trying to give you the facts about the water and sewer, like that's going to stay theirs. If they have a break on campus, we don't do that. Chief knows, I've talked about it. I get, I have concerns about not, if, of taking a portion of the SRO. Because that SRO is at the school all day, every day. In the summer, we might get, we do get a little portion and we'll get certain special events. Correct. The advantage of having SROs there is we're the first ones there, like Jeff said. So having an SRO there that's familiar with their staff when they approach the building is obviously an advantage. They're already part of the fire. So my concern is what is Western Lakes and Merton new if we take over Arrowhead since they're part of that contract currently? Beyond that, I'm still trying to wrap it around and we'll figure out, we'll talk with Hector tomorrow just to make sure there isn't anything. I'm not for or against it. That's truly up to you guys. So.
And I, and I'm in agreement. I don't want some major, I'm trying to stress the fact of only expenses that we would decide that we wanted are the only thing that could come on. They're already on our water.
I know that.
No, I, I know, but you're saying there's these hidden costs and all of a sudden, it could only happen if we voted and said, we want to pay for this for them. That's. I mean, and if I'm wrong, tell me because we're trying to find these hidden costs.
I forgot my file at home, so I don't have it with me. I forgot it. That's my fault.
This isn't a today decision anyway.
Yeah, I, I had all my stuff in a file and I forgot.
I put it on the agenda just to find out the intent. This isn't necessarily going to.
I do have, I believe, some of those numbers, but they may be old. But again, I forgot it. So.
I was just going to offer that it's unfortunate that they were unable to give you site-specific plans five years ago. Different board. I don't, I don't even know if there's any members or board that were even there. However, we recently with our series of referendums went through extensive, very exhaustive facility and site assessments. And so a lot of the stuff that had not been really mapped out prior to the referendums is, is now all mapped out by construction firms that have done that for us. So we should be able to give you a lot more in-depth information that you're looking for. I'll, I'll take note of that and make sure that that is provided if, if we move forward.
So our intent tonight as a board is to decide if we want to go further down the rabbit hole and explore this and have more serious conversations about pursuing this.
Actually, they sent over a letter of intent and I think, my understanding, what Arrowhead would just like, same with them, they want to look at, should we go down this rabbit hole also. So let's, I mean, using that as the phrase. But they don't want to go and pay attorneys and do a bunch of things. And we're going to say, yeah, we don't want you anyway. And I, I believe that they're aware from us being at their workshops. If all of a sudden there's some, and like, and hidden costs, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be coming to the board. I'm not talking, like some wild hidden costs. You know, where all of a sudden they're going to annex and be like, all right, we're not paying for an SRO, but we want you to give us two and just cover it. Like, those are the kind of costs, we have to vote on those things, but if there was some hidden costs, we've been really pushing and looking for them. But I think that before they, because they're the ones that got to go through the process of actually going and paying people to come up with a packet and come to us with an actual petition requesting annexation. And I think that they would at least like to know. They're trying to get a feeling of, is this even worth our time or do they not want to?
And this doesn't happen every day. It's not like schools annex everywhere. So this is something we're just going to talk with our legal about just to make sure that we don't overlook something if five, six, seven of you have interest. And I think President Fanner still brought this, just as a courtesy to them to say, do you have interest? Do you, do you, do you, if it's 615234, whatever it is, that he can look at them and say, hey, let's hold off or let's keep going. So.
I'm a fan of the pros for certain. I think that they're the shared, the shared ideas, the rec idea. I mean, that, that's awesome. And I, my grandfather went to Heartland High. So. And I, my grandfather went to Heartland High, so it's kind of special to me, too. So I think that's a cool idea of having our Arrowhead be truly Heartland Arrowhead. So I, I'm in favor for sure of moving further down and determining whether or not this, if there is any hidden cost, or if there's something we're not seeing, but if there's nothing we're not seeing, I think this is kind of, kind of a neat idea.
I share the same thing, just, cause I want them to be able to see where I kind of land.
I have a question for Chief Misco, um, with, um, the school resource officers, are there any trends of having more than one officer on a shift at a time at other schools? Or is it typically, right now, all schools that have a resource officer is just one per shift?
So there are a lot of different models out there. I know, I got a call from Nina, uh, Police Department for their high school, and they're like, what do you do at Arrowhead? I said, well, I don't do anything, so, call, call Sheriff's Department. But I know they went to a two, or I believe went to a two SRO during the day contract, cause they're a larger high school like Arrowhead is. I do think there's value to that, with Arrowhead being a split campus, and with students walking to and from, it's harder to secure those buildings, so I can understand that as being a perk. But I would say it's not absolutely necessary, if you were to ask, are there reasons to do it? I could give you probably some there. I do think a lot of the schools, um, that hadn't had SROs and jumped on that bandwagon within the last five-ish or so years, really see the value in them and have doubled down in them. Some of these neighboring school districts went from no SROs to gaining high school SROs, to then expanding it to middle schools, to then expanding it to all their schools. And some of which the police departments in our current recruitment are having a hard time meeting that demand, cause you can't find the cops to fill those, there's more schools than they can find cops, uh, to figure that part out. So I know some neighboring areas even then hired retired police officers that are allowed to carry armed on school grounds, and they utilize that as an offset, either with the SRO at high schools, or, um, to the schools where they couldn't get police officers integrated, cause they couldn't find the cops in this recruitment nightmare that we're still living through.
Adam had a good question, he asked, he asked about officers being shared with the other schools. Arrowhead is one of the old ways of, you have a high school, and then you have all the feeders underneath. They're not together, they're all separate, uh, I don't know how many superintendents, principals, it's not one joint school, so. I don't want to say they don't collaborate with them, but they're not under their guise, so it's a little different.
Not to totally segue, but that is something that actually is kind of being discussed, right? Bringing it all together?
And we did talk about that previously. One, the word SRO gets us a little skittish in the police department, cause we've talked about it with different schools several times, and nothing ever tends to happen, cause it just comes down to the financing of the positions. So we have talked with North Shore Middle School at times, and as you understand, when there's, when there's something happening, that's front of mind, but then when things kind of go back to normal, then we kind of forget about it, and then nothing moves forward. We've talked with Lake Country Lutheran, they've, uh, they have private armed security guards, those retired police officers, and some scanning equipment. We actually, I actually met with the superintendent and the principal at Arrowhead a couple of years ago, because, um, Greendale was doing something, um, kind of outside the box with some of their, and I always forget the community fund that the school runs, whatever that was, that, that fund's called. They use some of those dollars to offset and share the costs of an SRO between, what is in Martin Luther and Greenfield, or Greendale, which would be, the sister school would be Lake Country Lutheran here in Heartland, and sharing that with the public schools. And they do some outside the box thinking there to fund some of those positions and make that happen as well. And we were, we were looking like that was a possibility until, um, they wanted to share that at Arrowhead. We thought it was with some other schools that were in Heartland, and then obviously I can't share the position in Arrowhead, cause I don't have jurisdiction, and I don't believe the pri, and the primary jurisdictions would give me that carte blanche mutual aid and take on that liability without being involved in it themselves.
Flip, if I could say something, and, and Chief, I'm, I mean, you'll know right away where I'm going, cause I think it's important that we do understand this, cause no matter what, we're always gonna keep people safe. And I do want to jump the gun, we're talking a lot about SROs and the cost of them, and I do want to stress again that Chief has talked with their business manager, and for sure, one of them, they're like, yep, we'll, we'll pay it for a hundred percent, and then they kind of talked and was like, hey, could we just pay eighty for this one? Cause you might be able to use them in a sprinkling, that doesn't mean we're gonna do it, but it sounds pretty dang close, like we can get them there even if they pay a hundred percent for both. Saying that, though, and I think it's important that we note, because there's a sense of community, even for this entire region, and let's be honest, at least I think so, Heartland's the anchor. If all hell breaks loose, this is where people come. If people need to have a homecoming parade, and they want to have it fun for their kids, this is where they come. If they want to do any of that stuff, this is where they come. If there's a wrestler or a swimmer from Arrowhead, or someone running in a marathon in the Olympics, somewhere on the other side of the globe, and it pops up and it says, and they went to high school at Heartland Arrowhead. When Max Asgren was wrestling, and it was out there, Heartland Arrowhead. If you, half the people that have students in that school, when you say it's not in Heartland, are like, what? They can't believe it. Now, is that a reason to vote for it? No, but it does show that we are the anchor, and I'm gonna prove that by asking Chief, how much money each year, each year, you get a check for from Heartland Lakeside for making sure that everyone there is safe? Also, how many weeks go by each, each month that you have not stepped foot in that school to provide the safety that's needed?
So that, the easy answer, zero dollars, um, is what they give us. But one thing, there is a high expectation from our community. Myself as a parent, I have a very high expectation that my local police departments are working very closely with my schools in light of the crazy violence any school can see. There is no, that won't happen here. If you think that, open your eyes and look at national headlines, and you'll see it in the most remote areas of our country that this, these terrible events can happen. So we take it, and we are in those schools almost every day. Calls for service can dictate otherwise at times, but we make it a priority to do a school check, so much so, we created a whole event type so we could track it called School Check. And that's not drive around the parking lot, but it requires us to go in, meet our office staff, know the building. We shouldn't be figuring out where the library is, or the auditorium is, when shots are being fired, or there's an attack or a critical incident, we need to know all that stuff upfront, so. I take it as a priority in suburban law enforcement, school safety is a high priority for me. So we go above and beyond, so much so, I probably don't have an SRO because of it. But at the same time, if there's a critical incident, I could look myself in the mirror and say, Heartland Police Department did everything we can within our resources to keep that school safe. So that's why we do it right.
And the reason that I asked that was not calling anyone out, but like, what Chief just said, like, one of the things that's already been shown is, if the annexation happened, because we were talking about SROs, we don't have someone coming in saying, no, we want you to cover us like you cover that other school. They're coming in saying, and we'll pay our way, but let's partner. And we are the anchor of the community because we do things like that. Whether they pay or not, we'll be there. And I just, I, in the long run, because of the collaboration is why I thought it was really important, you know, that we talk about this, but we can control what we give away, or subsidize, let's call it, and what we don't. And, and we're looking for those hidden costs, if they are there, um, but we are the anchor. And for this region, why would Heartland do it? Because we lead the way, it's what we do. It's what we do. It's, we built a whole road, or almost built an entire road that we were gonna pay for to Arrowhead, however many years ago, and different board. Arrowhead ended up at the last minute saying, no, don't do that. Whose traffic gets backed up when people are going to Arrowhead? Heartland's, so we gain more control over it. There's certain things we can do, and we do it, we, I feel we need to lead the way. And I feel like it will lead the way, not only for our youth, but because fifty percent, I don't know if that's exactly correct, fifty percent of the students in that school are from Heartland, maybe it's forty, I don't know the exact percentages. But it's, uh, sometimes you do things just because they're the right thing to do, but then you protect your taxpayers while you're doing it. So that's kind of the gist, I think some of it is more than just the money of it. Do we have the right to just say, we don't have to, we're not having you in? Yes, I just thought it was worth talking about.
If I could just say one last thing on this topic of school resource officer. Well, it is something I think should be paid attention to, I do think it's an obstacle that is easily overcome. The program already exists, the, the financial backing of the program already exists. So a lot of that is already in place, it's just then fine tuning what that ultimately looks like. And at the end of the day, both the Arrowhead Board, if this were to happen, and the Heartland Board would have their say and approval in that process. So I think that's one thing that's actually of the easier things, obviously a lot of things for each board to consider and think through, but I wouldn't let the school resource officer weigh you down too much, cause I think that's one thing that's already kind of in place, it's just a different person doing it, us, instead of who's currently doing it.
Anybody, I don't want to, anybody want to add anything or give any indications? Since we have some members of the board on whether they feel kind of for or against, no one has to, I'm just saying, do, does anyone want to?
Well, I was gonna say, I'd like to move forward, uh, especially to get a, uh, our attorney's response and information on that, uh, and then we can move forward.
Okay, and I'll have Ryan provide that information after that meeting tomorrow? Or have Hector just send it right out to everybody on the board?
Sam? Yeah, I'm, definitely.
Okay. Um, I don't, if, if the board feels we need to take some type of a non-binding vote, cause we would just be voting that we're moving forward, otherwise that, that meeting's set, and then we'll get that information. So when we do take votes, is, everybody feel comfortable with that? And I think they got enough indication, so, alright, well, thank you. And, uh, thank you, everybody, for allowing that item to come up, uh, while they were here. Okay. Of course, I will be really quick, but I'm gonna run to the bathroom, sorry.
You don't have to stay either.
You don't have to stay.
Oh, that she does. They both have to stay.
We don't have to stay. We'll do a consideration of approval of our minutes for the November tenth meeting.
Make a motion to approve the November tenth.
Go for it.
Meeting minutes?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the November tenth meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, now we have items related to the vouchers. We have a consideration of a project closeout payment in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars, thirty-one cents to Stark Pavement Corp. for the twenty-twenty-four paving program.
So this is just paying the retainer, we have a retainer that we hang on to for a certain number of months, um, and that is closed out, everything signed off, that closes out the twenty-twenty-fourteen paving project. No issues.
I'll make. Let's go from the right to left. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, closeout payment in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents to Stark Pavement Corp. for the twenty-twenty-four pavement program.
Then I'll second, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that closeout payment to Stark Pavement Corp. Uh, for the twenty-twenty-four paving program in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, and now we have the vouchers for payment in the amount of one hundred, one thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents, and that includes what we just voted on, Ryan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred forty-three and thirty-two cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the payment for vouchers in the amount of one hundred, one thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars, thirty-two cents. Any discussion?
I just had one question here on page one, down here, economic development, the creepy crawl reimbursement.
So that's the bid? So the bid, they charged for wristbands, and so much of each wristband went to the bar, so much stayed with the bid. So it's all their money, not, it's all bid money.
Alright.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have actions that are related to licenses and permits. We have consideration of a special event application for Tour of America's Dairyland on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six. Our bid president is here and has been patiently waiting.
A creepy crawler, you mean?
Yes, yes. Hello, Steve.
How are you guys?
Floor is yours.
So, we spoke, what, six weeks ago about, uh, gauging the interest of bringing Tour of America's Dairyland back into town. So tonight, providing the special event permit as well as, um, the route information, all the paperwork that was provided with the route information that Toad sent, they'd like to keep the route the exact same way that it was in twenty-twenty-one. The times are actually looking to bump up about a half hour to an hour, so it'd finish earlier. So it would, it's an all-day event, they set up about an hour and a half before the first race. The route does open, uh, in between specific races, so residents can get in and out if they need to. We, there is some information that I did miss on the application. We would look to potentially have up to, I'd say, ten food trucks at.
Could be local food vendors, too.
Exactly, and we, the whole goal, though, is to focus on Heartland businesses, restaurants, bars, things like that, and really get them more involved than bringing somebody from outside the community in. That's our focus. Obviously, being the bid, we want to highlight our bid businesses, so.
That's a, that's a good point, I just have a question. Are businesses in Heartland that are not in the bid excluded, or are they able to, they, okay? I mean, I know there's certain things with advertising, but I'm just focusing on if, if one of the other restaurants wanted to try to talk to you and say, can I set up a, okay.
And they can, I mean, they can utilize my lot at US Bank, because start-finish line is right, typically right there. We have plenty of parking right there, and obviously nobody can get in and out of the lot all day, so they could set up tents, things like that. Also looking at if there's any Heartland businesses that want to set up tents, we would give them that opportunity. So it's not just bid businesses, we want all Heartland businesses to be able to take advantage of.
Sure.
Of the event.
Okay.
I have, well, one comment, um, the paperwork that we got, um, there was no approvals or denies from the department heads, so has you guys taken a look at that?
I think we have now, it came in not late, but we wanted to get it out, cause Steve's been trying to work on it, get everything. I think everybody did sign off on it now, just a copy you have, isn't it?
Wanted to make sure.
And up, up top, there was something that said, are you a five oh one C three? No, they're actually, they exist because the village exists, there are tax ID, there are everything, there, they are our insurance, all of that. So the bid is us.
Yeah, it, um, I was, I helped usher, or what do you want to call it, watch the, the gate of one of the intersections. Watched the gate of one of the intersections when it came the first time. It was fantastic, so.
There was one on here. You put no for bathrooms. Is the intent that they would use private businesses?
They would. We have a no doubt to Toad. There is a chance that we would bring in a couple porta-potties that would be stationed and then removed the following morning. They may be stationed at the US Bank property since I can sign off on that, so.
If they were going to be on something public, you would just have to work with staff. I mean, let...
Absolutely.
Yeah, and if you recall last year with the Toad, they had a beer vendor down off of Haight in Goodwin, and I think you guys are... There would probably be like beer snobs or the inn or things like that that may go... That's why it's not really a food truck, but they'd kind of have extended their premises for that.
To trustee Alquist's question on...
That it did come in, and then to get it in a packet, it had to go out right away. I do believe everyone has signed it. I know on my signature, the only thing I put as a comment is when Toad came through last year, we did assign an officer to it, and I think fire had a gator with a fire crew and an ambulance out there just in case. I would recommend those same precautions, but that's just so the village board's aware of that, that we would designate those resources to the event.
Chief, did you have anything that you wanted to add, or?
No, I fully agree with that. We'll, as long as we have, you know, the date and everything, we'll secure the gator again and put a crew down there with the ambulance, so.
Okay.
We worked well with their medical... They have their own medical people that come out, an actual doctor and everything there, so.
Okay. Wonderful.
Real quick, they do all the barricades. They do all... They do all the barricades. They provide all that. So I'm sure there might be some, if we shut down streets, that Public Works may have to block some things or barricade or whatever it is, but it was a pretty smooth event last time.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application for the Toad. I guess I should say Tour of America's Dairyland on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth of 2026.
Can you add with up to ten food, local food, or ten food vendors and possibility of restrooms?
Sure. What he said.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the special event application of the Tour of America's Dairyland for Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, 2026, with up to ten food vendors and a few portable bathrooms possible, and that would be worked on. You would get staff's approval on all of that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. If the number were to change, then all of a sudden, if you're going to have more, just bring it back only because it's part of the vote.
Absolutely.
Like staff wouldn't be... It would just have to come back. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Now, we have Village Board, first review of a planned unit development amendment for the Sandhill development and consideration of scheduling a public hearing on January twelfth, 2026. If you guys recall, that was presented to us. This has gone through Plan Commission.
Real quick, before you go, this is reading one from this. The goal is that you'll set a public hearing. It can be no less than thirty days, which gets us to January twelfth, which they're okay with that date. That would be the second reading. We anticipate everything with the PUD amendment to be completed by then, so you could move the suspend rules in January and approve, or go to January twenty-sixth. But I'll let you go, Mr. Seetman.
Okay. This is the Sandhill project. We were approved as a PUD for one hundred and ten units. We're before you today to reduce that down to ninety-two total units and making Phase Three and Four, which we haven't started yet, into a single-family condominium project that's part of Sandhill. We believe the value of those homes will be greater than the two-family homes together going forward, so it's not going to reduce any values for the village, and we think it's going to be a lot better project. The demand out there has been fairly strong, but we believe the single-family would bring even more strength to it. Right now, we have seven buildings yet to build in Phase One and Two, total of fourteen units. We're going to start two buildings here in the next forty-five days in that phase. We would hope to build Phase Three and Four next summer. So it would be thirty-six single-family condominiums in Phase Three and Four, and they would be part of Sandhill.
So again, just the first reading. Plan Commission had no objections. Staff don't see any. I think it's a more marketable product for them, and probably it's more something that's a little bit more desired, and I think it'll go well. Nobody asked questions. That's just the reading. No motion for the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we schedule the public hearing for the planned unit development for Sandhill for January twelfth, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the public hearing for January twelfth, 2026 for Sandhill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, have a good Thanksgiving. Now, we have... Maybe we should keep all the important stuff till the end, then everybody has to stay so they can hear our announcements. Now, we have Village Board reviewing consideration of installation of a parking lot at 163 East Capital Drive. This came forward from the Plan Commission. I don't know. Does anybody have any questions for them? Like I said, this is sent forward from the Plan Commission, so we're approving what the Plan Commission approved.
All I can say is Mr. Moen must have pulled some connections because I see the blacktop today.
On the... On top of the gravel?
Yes.
You got good weather for it. We got lucky with the weather, but...
So it was approved by the Plan Commission. It is paved, so I'm hoping you approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the installation of a parking lot at 163 East Capital Drive.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the installation of a parking lot at 163 East Capital Drive. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. I'll only have one thing, and I did reach out to Mike, and I think all the equipment will be taken out of the front yard now. Just if you could pass that. I could send him a message, too. I had sent him a message, and he said that it would be. Someone had just asked about equipment that was out in front.
There... I think he's got his, um, bobcat.
Oh, no, but that at some point that'll get removed.
Boy.
Or I'm not sure when, but hopefully soon.
Probably this week.
He said today, so it might already be gone. I don't know. But I'm just saying, if you could pass that on.
I did just drive past there, and I don't remember seeing it, but, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Now, we have other items for consideration. We have discussion and consideration of fire department's request to order MDC computers in 2025 for three fire trucks and two ambulances that are budgeted for in 2026.
Chief.
Yes. So we did some price checking after the budget was approved to purchase the new MDCs for the three heavies and the two ambulances as the old ones were not able to be upgraded to Windows eleven. We had budgeted three thousand four hundred dollars per unit for a total of twenty thousand four hundred dollars. We have reached out to three vendors to get quotes. TKK Electronics was three thousand three twenty-three per unit with a one hundred dollar shipping fee for all units for a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. Ontech, our IT service, was three thousand ninety-nine dollars per unit for a total of nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars, and then Rugged Depot was three thousand fifty per unit for a total of fifteen thousand two fifty. We're going to add an additional unit to the grass rig, but found out the mounting brackets for that model truck is no longer available, so we'll only be purchasing five units for that. All the quotes are under budget. We request permission to order these MDCs prior to January one to prevent a five percent increase after January first. Again, we recommend the purchase of five MDC units from Rugged Depot for the price of three thousand fifty per unit and a total of fifteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars. The vendor has stated that there is a six-to-eight week lead time, and we would not be billed until after the first of the new year.
So again, like all other departments, one of those things is the lead time. Try to get it now so that we get it in time early to start the year. It is approved in the 2026 budget.
In time and under budget. I'd make a motion that we move forward with the purchase of five MDC units from Rugged Depot for the price quoted of thirty... Or three thousand fifty dollars per unit, totaling one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of these MDC rugged tablets. Now, the fire... I do have a question. The... These are for the trucks that we have now.
Correct.
I just wanted, because the wording kind of was like, it made it sound like we were pre-ordering them for trucks that were coming, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything. I just wanted to...
Correct. All the vehicles we have.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Now, we have a consideration of a resolution, number eleven twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, approving the 2026 municipal court budget with Lake Country Municipal Court.
Every year, we do this with the Lake Country Municipal Court. This goes out to all the twenty-one or so communities that encompass that court. They ask for a resolution from each municipality to approve their budget. Their budget is that four hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Our revenues will offset their expenditures. The biggest expenditure is staff. We have two full-time and two part-time staff there. But then the revenues from their portion of each citation that we write is what pays for that court. So no municipality actually pays for the court through budgetary dollars. It's all through basically the user fee of the citation part of the court costs, that percentage of that, each citation that's issued. So basically, it funds itself. Just looking for that approval for the resolution to approve the budget that the administrative committee, where each municipality sent their representative, reviewed and then approved the 2026 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution eleven twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, approving the 2026 municipal court budget with Lake Country Municipal Court.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a resolution eleven twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, approving the 2026 municipal court budget with Lake Country Municipal Court. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have consideration of the Heartland Improvement District budget for 2026. If I'm not mistaken, this is never changes, so it's like seven thousand... Seventy-two thousand four hundred. Am I right on that number?
Yeah, seventy-four thousand eight hundred.
Oh, okay.
They approved it last Tuesday, obviously, after we had already approved ours. It was in our budget, but this is just your formal approval. It's not village money. It's no taxpayer money. It's all business money. You just are the people who bless their budgets.
Make a motion then to approve the Heartland Business Improvement District 2026 budget for seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bid budget for 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have consideration of first reading of a bill for an ordinance, number eleven twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend section sixty-six dash twelve of the Village of Heartland Code of Ordinances regulating residency restrictions for sex offenders.
Remember, this will just come to the next meeting. You guys have the maps. You guys can kind of discuss anything if you want.
The maps came through at the...
I just have one question. Was this reviewed with Hector as far as... Because my main concern is getting sued, so I was just curious.
It was... I mean, for a full answer, it was discussed with him.
There's no footage that's approved, even seven fifty.
What... Okay, so it would still be...
You could do a hundred feet.
And still be sixty.
Chief Wescott and I talked. Eventually, one day, he thinks that a problem made... The laws could change in general. But right now, it doesn't matter. You could be right now at seven hundred fifty feet.
Okay.
I guess that's the gentle answer.
I was actually looking at it. I'm looking at the maps. I honestly would like to see even further. Like, I think the fifteen-hundred-foot map, given the loss of Zion, still gives us an awful lot of places for people to move into, and it would satisfy a lot of my feels with some of the bigger subdivisions where there are a lot of children running around. So I wouldn't even be opposed to going further.
So, and to answer your question, Tim, I mean, and it's a good one. It has been discussed. Obviously, that's his feeling is the safest... The safest way to drive is to not drive. Nothing's going to happen when you're in a vehicle, kind of thing. There's always a chance for anything, and like Ryan said, someone could come forward and say, "Hey, I think it should be two fifty. I'm going to sue you."
He just said it's a business.
It's a business decision like anything else. There's no magic number, so. I mean...
It's defendable, and they would defend it.
Yes.
Based on other communities and what they have. These are ones that put us in a real goofy position because sometimes it seems like that goalpost can move depending on a new case that comes forward and... You know, and we're walking a tight rope, but, you know, I do stress to the board, anybody can come forward with a suit for anything. So it doesn't mean we're doing something wrong because in a case like this, we're walking a tight rope where we have a lot of people that are saying, "Hey, I want this," and that's who we're representing. But at the same time, the safest way to not have anything come forward on this, the village used to have nothing. So it's a tough one.
So going what Adam said, then, if we expand it, there's still the... Just as much of a chance for a lawsuit than at twelve fifty, right? So why wouldn't we just do two thousand? I mean, if we're going to get sued, whether it's a hundred feet or two thousand feet, what... I mean, what difference does it make?
In my opinion, obviously, trying to do this is so that it doesn't get to that point.
Well, I understand that, and obviously, the farther out we go, the less opportunity they have to live.
Correct.
However, so I guess I'm thinking, okay, twelve fifty is where we're at. Aren't we more susceptible to lawsuit if the farther out we go?
I would say that there's a higher likelihood because as it goes farther out, it reduces the amount of available housing.
And to be quite honest with you, other than this... I can't remember the guy's name, but other than this federal guy coming in, it was a moot point. No one even... We had to take this out of the cobwebs to talk about it because before this guy showed up. So if the guy leaves, or if everything's cool, then it's going to go back into the cobwebs again.
Until...
Until something else happens, so. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm... I mean, I'm with you, Adam, but, you know, the farther we go, the more susceptible we are, I think, so.
We're... Oh, go ahead.
Chief, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not going to do anything for that person that has moved in already. This is only for new people moving in, correct?
Yes, two-part answer to that. You're absolutely correct. We can't be ever retroactive. So if someone's here, we... This can't be in... It goes in place as today's date at that footage.
Okay, yes.
And goes forward. The second part of that answer is, if you're being specific with the question for the resident in Four Winds, my memory is right. I don't think it hits that property till you hit two thousand feet, and that's off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Yeah, if you have questions, email them to Chief Ryan. Again, we got to bring it back. We can discuss it next meeting. And then... Yeah, I'm just saying, any questions, we can kind of chat. So we're... We've talked to the attorney about it a little bit, so. Yeah, just the first reading.
So I'll do some homework and come back and talk about it on the second reading and make some decisions.
All right. We have announcements.
Since I got the mic, I'll start us off. I only have one quick thing just to highlight. I sent this out in last week's update to the board, but we had our drug takeback event. We do that twice a year. The DEA kind of spearheads that locally. We work together with them throughout the whole state of Wisconsin. Wisconsin typically is either like number one or two in the entire country on drug takeback, so they definitely are doing something right with that. But we do not do an event, so we don't do a special event ever. Like, some communities will have cops out there with a garbage can. They're trying to fill it up. We just run our two bins in both our lobbies here, and we always are like the top five or so in that countywide, and we're definitely not population-wise. So as you saw in the list that I sent, City of Walkshow was number one with eight hundred and sixty-eight pounds of medications taken in basically over the last six-ish months. Number two is City of Economalk at seven twenty-six. Number three was Waukesha County Sheriff at the different locations that they collect from. And then, uh, tied for number four was the Village of Heartland, along with the City of New Berlin, at five hundred and thirty-eight pounds. And again, that's us, just over ten thousand residents, City of New Berlin, forty thousand residents. And we're right there with them just with promoting the boxes that we have. And then a distant fifth was Village of Sussex at three hundred and nine pounds. All together, it looks like Waukesha County itself took in over five, or took in five thousand three hundred and forty-eight pounds of unused medications. And that's with your Walgreens and other places doing it on top of all that, so that's just us taking that in. It's a lot, a lot, a lot of different stuff, all kinds of stuff. That's all I got.
Uh, the, the full-time person that we offered the job to is past his physical part. He's working on the psychological part right now. So, um, if everything checks out, we should have him on board January.
The week of the fifteenth.
Week of the fifteenth would be his first shift with us, so. Um, other than that, not too much. I've been gone until today, so.
Welcome back.
I'll let you heat talk you.
Uh, nothing too much, obviously, on the fire side. Um, just keeping call volume up. Uh, we have a couple different, um, fund, or donation things going on at the firehouse. We got the food drive, obviously, that we are waiting for the last part of our bin to show up so we can actually display our entire, um, deer theme that we have. We're also doing a toy drive with, um, the Girl Scouts through Heartland Lakeside School District out of Heartland North. Um, they brought over a box for a toy drive, so if you know anybody with any gently-used or new toys that would, they'd like to donate, we have a box at the station that they can drop them off at, but that's all.
We have our winter-spring program registration opening up next week. Resident registration Wednesday, non-residents can register on Thursday. And then, just a reminder that the food drive is going on for the holiday train. We have ten different sites that have food collection bins, and we'll be collecting items through the end of day on December tenth.
If people wanna make monetary donations, how should they go about doing that?
All of our flyers and all of the collection bins have QR codes that take them directly to the food pantry's donation site.
So don't send a check. Okay.
Good? I'm good.
Um, I have one, uh, announcement request, and I did go to the office today that is brought, was brought up to me several times yesterday at church, our over-the-road sign.
We know.
I know. I'm just saying, I, I told them I would bring it up, that we need to change, the, the dates are correct, but the days are wrong.
Yeah, the, the bid changes that, they just changed the date, not the day of the week. That will be changed. Sorry, I thought you were gonna mention that it is Sandy's birthday tomorrow, but my apologies.
Oh, and also that it's Sandy's birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
Birthday.
She's gonna be, she's gonna be thirty-five.
Dan Patrick.
They're, they're making the. For that, so it should be delivered to us on Tuesday.
For Sandy's birthday, they're making the banner?
Yeah, over the street.
That's all.
Congratulations to the Arrowhead for state championship win.
I'm good. Uh, we have, uh, reviews coming up for, or review coming up for the village manager. We'll be doing that at next meeting. Anybody that hasn't sent them to me, just, uh, if they could get them to me so I can compile the numbers. Obviously, you all know that there's a format to it. We have a really good system that the board uses. I'm saying this obviously for the public, but, um, it is, we pile, compile the data and come up with a number. Uh, Heartland Lights is on twelve-five, there's also a drone show that day. I encourage people to come out and enjoy, um, the kickoff in Heartland, um, to Christmas. And on twelve-ten, we have the holiday train, it'll be arriving, I think we have a five-thirty, I think is the time the holiday train will be arriving, that's an approximation. Um, please collect as much food as possible, uh, contact the village, get your QR code. If you wanna make a monetary donation, otherwise just load up your car four or five times, get it to the village and find a drop-off site and, and pile that food in. Obviously, there's a lot of, uh, people that are in need, especially as we go through. We see the economy isn't the best right now, so that can be a huge help, uh, for some families that, that don't have the means to have a really wonderful Christmas dinner. Um, or food throughout the week, to be quite honest. We also have, uh, I do wanna, uh, second, uh, trustee DeBoer and congratulate Arrowhead, uh, football team on, on their state championship. Um, I also do wanna just give a little shout-out to, uh, Lake Country Lutheran, made a good drive deep into the, uh, into the playoffs and, uh, had a really great season, so congratulations to them as well, and all the other sports teams that are doing so well. I know there was some others that were, uh, I'm not sure of all of them, but we're doing very good. Um, tax, taxes are being mailed out, or we're, are being mailed out on twelve-four. These are property taxes. I encourage people to actually look at the bill. The property tax total is not from Heartland. It's a compilation of Heartland, Waukesha County Technical College, the County of Waukesha, and whatever school districts you live in, be it Arrowhead, Lake Country Lutheran, or both, or, uh, not Lake Country Lutheran, sorry. Lake Country School is part of the village, and we have Heartland Lakeside and Swallow. So look at your bills. Heartland's portion, Heartland's tax lent up point seven, seven percent. That's less than one percent. So congratulations to the village board on doing that, and to the staff for making that possible and taking it seriously to always try to keep costs down. Uh, and with that, I have no other announcements, other than to say I hope everybody has a fantastic and wonderful Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and happy birthday, Sandy.
Happy birthday, Sandy.
Happy birthday.
Okay, let's not be doing that. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.